Good evening. Welcome to Mashpee Board Selectmen Joint Meeting with the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribal Council. On behalf of the Select Board, Chairman and the rest of the council, we greatly appreciate the invitation and your initiative to ask us to come in. And I think we all hope that this is the first of many productive conversations that we should continue to have and, you know, we're really looking forward to a productive conversation. I'd like to, if I could, just start our portion of the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Chairman Brian Whedon of the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, and I'd like to ask Councilwoman Winnie Johnson Graham to give us an opening prayer, please.
I should've said, "Test it." Creator and ancestors, we give thanks for all our relations. We give thanks for the land that we stand on. Without our land, we would be nothing. We give thanks for the water, the stars, the oceans. We give thanks for everything. Anach, let it be this way.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll turn it back over to the Select Board.
Thank you. So, we have an agenda. Chairman Whedon and I, after our Board Selectmen discussed it, we also had a conversation last week to try and set up an agenda that would just begin to scratch the surface, perhaps, of the things that we shouldn't need to be talking about. We are, you know, I think, open and interested in talking about as much as there is to talk about. Despite the fact that it's a joint meeting, you know, we're still bound by Massachusetts' open meeting law, so the things that we have on the agenda are things we can discuss tonight. But I think, just so the people know, towards the end, Chairman Whedon and I had a discussion about, at the end of the meeting, having a discussion about which topics that we have not included in here, and I believe there would be some significant ones, that speak to some of the hearts of the matter between the town and the tribe that we should schedule for future discussion and put ourselves on the calendar so that we can continue this conversation and get to it. So, you know, we're going to try, I think, to stick to the substance of what's on this agenda, and, but, you know, if there's other things that come up over the course of the conversation, I think, you know, it would be our desire to, you know, put those on the to-do list for the next round of conversations, and we'll meet as frequently and as often and work as hard as we need to, to try to come to accommodation on issues of mutual concern. So, the first thing we wanted to talk about, does this sound okay out there? Was the potential, or discussion about the treatment facility at the tribal housing. And the reason I wanted to bring this up was, just to sort of review some discussion on this, you know, there had been, at one point, some conversation, and the town's original nitrogen management plan contemplated the use of excess capacity at that facility to service the town center area, you know, the town hall, what was then the river bend, and some of the commercial locations, just at the intersection of Great Neck and 130. When we met, many years ago now, in our only prior joint meeting between the council and the Select Board, that potential use of that facility came into question, just because there was some discussion about other priorities for development at the housing area that the tribe was thinking of. It's been a couple of years, and it just seemed to be worth bringing that up again. You know, originally, the town's plan, or what we had bid as part of Phase One, replaced the potential service area from your facility and connected it all the way down to the transfer station site. That's not in the current plan that we're bidding out now, because it's a very expensive run. It's a lot of pipe, not a lot of users. It wasn't cost-effective for us to do it, but it still leaves that town center area unaddressed, which obviously has meaningful impacts on the Mashpee River. So, the question is, and an open-ended question was, can you tell us a little bit of what your thinking is for using the capacity of that treatment plan, and is there potential for collaboration and having the town be a customer for that site?
I don't know if any other tribal counselors want to talk about the issue. I know Councilman Domingo Texera is the co-housing liaison, along with Councilman Whedon, and the tribe is looking at building out more units at the site. However, I do believe there is some room for growth. I do believe that the tribe's not trying to build out to maximum capacity, and I do know that the treatment center is definitely an option to help the town with the wastewater. So, I don't know if Councilman Texera has anything, or Vice Chairman.
Concerning the wastewater, first of all, thanks for coming. I mean, I appreciate the opportunity, and the last time we met on this issue was in 2016, quite honestly, six years ago. I don't believe that we still address the concerns that was put forth then regarding who was going to pay for the repairs if something happened. We needed room for growth for the amount of gallons per day that, and we didn't want to stunt our growth by opening it up, so it was kind of, there was a couple of different issues as far as how was it going to work? How does the town envision that working, collecting the money for the hookups? If people didn't pay, was the tribe going to be responsible for that collection, or was the town for these type of hookups? So, I believe the same issues in 16 are pretty much kind of the issues that we still don't have answered. We know the capacity for gallons that we can handle right now on a daily. I believe it's 40,000 gallons is our maximum, and we're only told to use 80% of that gallon for what we have to allow us to have expansion in our housing development. But we also are under a permit of how many gallons we can outsource, so we kind of need to know, what does this hookup envision on how many gallons a day that we're looking at to know if it's something that we can work in with our permit and not stunt that growth on the housing development? So, I think the more information that you can give us regarding them matters, is kind of where we can go from there, in my standpoint. I don't know if that's enough for Domingo.
You know, for me, I agree with Vice Chairman that, you know, sharing of information is critical, so, you know, we know what our capacity is, but we're not fully sure as to the next round of build-outs at the housing project. You know, there's a couple of lots within the Lytec property that didn't get built out, you know, they were value-engineered out, and they could be built out if we had the funds. So, we do see a direct need for one- and two-bedroom units. Most of the housing units that were built out there now are two- and three-bedroom family units. There's some elderly units, you know, there's still a great need. Those 42 units aren't going to satisfy the tribe's housing issues, so, you know, there's a huge need for tribal housing. And the next phase, I think, that the Housing Director is looking at, and the Housing Commission are kind of, the target demographic group would be like, single fam, you know, one- and two-bedroom units, for people that are just mother and child, or, you know, individuals. They seem to be a target issue for the next phase. You know, beyond that, I don't think they're at that point where they've talked about, you know, building out further, but, you know, the tribe does need a lot more housing to address the issues satisfactorily. But if the town could provide the information to show kind of what that tie-in would look like, how many households and how many gallons per day they anticipate if that hookup was to be considered, then at least we would have the information in front of us when we have those discussions internally. That would be my suggestion.
Mr. Collins? Do you want to pan that down to?
Would Ray Jack be authorized to contact somebody?
What'd you say? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Would Ray Jack, our consultant, be authorized to contact somebody direct to discuss the possibility of logistics?
Yeah, you can contact me.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I think it'll be relatively easy to come up with a flow estimate, because we have those numbers before. You know, in our prior discussion, there was talk, not only of potentially expanding the housing at that location, but potentially community center, public safety facilities. I don't know whether, in the six years, you rightly pointed out, it's been a long time, that those plans have refined themselves enough that it's really just a housing conversation at that location, and, you know, how much room we might have to work with.
I think exactly what David said, as far as knowing the amount of gallons that we're talking about per day is going to help us, because we have the homework done on our end on what we can handle at that specific facility. So, in order to know if the collaboration and the partnership works, the amount of gallons per day is always vital, and then we can look at our permit that we are currently under to see if that amount of gallons that you're looking for is even permissible under our permit that we're currently under with that facility.
Okay.
To Andrew's question, the current plans do encompass, we're continuing and moving forward, we do have funding for a community center associated for the Lytec housing property, which will be an activities area for the members that live in there. We will have a few offices. I forget the proposed square footage on that, off the top of my head. I can get that for you. The other thing is the Child Development Center. We have funding for that, which we have preliminary conceptual drawings that they're moving forward to get to contract-level drawings. That's in the works. We have funding for that build-out as well, and that's all on that same parcel of property. There was preliminary plans. I'm not sure how they've moved forward with our emergency preparedness department, where he was looking at putting an emergency operations center over there, which I don't see a lot of volume coming out of something like that. It's more of a command center than with communications. It's not so much, you know, sheltering or anything like that, from my understanding. But currently, those are the plans, and additionally, short-term plans are to build out those four remaining kind of lots within the Lytec parcel of the property to address one- and two-bedroom units.
Great. So, we'll have, through the manager's office, our wastewater consultant get in touch with you, Mr. Vice Chair, and we'll go from there. Second thing we had put on the agenda was a conversation of opportunities to collaborate in funding for water quality improvement, open space acquisition. You know, I think from the town side, you know, obviously, we have access to state revolving fund loan funding for wastewater projects. That's what we're currently financing Phase One, utilizing. That provides a zero-interest loan. We also, by virtue of qualifying for that loan, qualify for 25% principal forgiveness under the Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust Fund. So, about $13 million of the $54 million cost of the project will be paid for by non-Mashpee taxpayers through the use of that offset fund, and that source of money is available to the town, and obviously, any resident in the town benefits from the reduction in the tax bill for any subsequent round of wastewater infrastructure that we pursue and get funded through town meeting. So, that's kind of like our base. It's supplemented by the Water Infrastructure Fund that Town Meeting established two years ago, I believe, where we reduced the community preservation assessment from 3% surcharge to 2, and added a 2% water infrastructure fund. That generates about $900,000 and change a year that is dedicated to wastewater and is further offsetting the cost of Phase One and will probably consume some portion of Phase Two. So, those are the primary sources of water quality funding that the town has access to, as a matter of sort of routine course. The federal infrastructure bill provides $1.1 billion in federal money that goes to the state that will be allocated through that loan program process. So, it's a bigger pie. So, if we put water quality projects forward in the next five years, there'll be more money out there for the town to compete statewide to obtain. 50% of that has to be given away by the form of principal forgiveness. So, the state hasn't quite figured out yet how they're going to do that, but Mashpee, I think Commissioner DEP in our meeting last week said that we are currently a Tier One community, so we do qualify for some percentage of principal forgiveness in addition to what we get from the Cape and Islands Trust. So, that's a pretty big pile of money that the town has access to if we did joint projects on wastewater that could offset our collective costs. You know, on the open space side, we have the Community Preservation Fund. There's about, I want to say about $4 million in the fund unallocated, of which open space is a eligible criteria for application, in addition, affordable housing and historic preservation. So, there's, you know, a fair bit of money there. The state does match us a modest amount when we set aside money for CPC. So, those are the sources of money we have direct access to. We can pursue federal grants through a variety of agencies, so there's a lot of opportunities for joint programs. I know that, conceptually, the infrastructure bill and some other federal COVID relief things have provided tribal access to significant sources of funding for open space values and water quality. So, we'd like to understand a little bit better what those are, sort of what you're pursuing. Are there opportunities for us to pool our resources to do some good things? Probably don't want to compete with one another in some respects, so, you know, where are you, as a community, looking to drive that money, and how does that potentially compare to what we've been thinking about? And are they complementary? Is there opportunities for partnership? Is this kind of a big, open question? I don't understand it. I don't know if anybody on the town side understands what opportunities have been made available to drive through this, and it would be helpful for us to understand that.
So, you know, on some of these fronts, I feel like a lot of the federal grants, when you read into the different types of projects that they support, they really get the warm fuzzies over projects where there's collaboration, especially between a tribe and municipality. So, you know, looking through some grants that are out there, there's a lot of funding on climate adaptation. I don't see a whole lot being done on that front regionally. There's some funds that the Cape Cod Commission acquired through a grant program, but I don't know how they're being utilized or taken advantage of by the municipalities at the local level. Some of the other funding that there's well-funded programs out there is through the EPA and environmental justice. There's quite a bit of funding out there for different types of projects that, you know, of various varieties that you could do, water quality, EPA, you know, there's several that are along the environmental justice front. And, you know, I think if we were to look at kind of what the needs are, there's creative ways to start cleaning the water now, rather than putting that, what was that, alum into the pond, you know, using chemicals to treat the Santewitt Pond, you know, that's a last-choice resort, you know, and I think there's creative ways where, you know, there's organic things that can take and absorb those sediments, like, you know, growing things on top of the water and things of that nature, that I think I'd much rather look at those options. And I think there's funding out there to do kind of projects that would, you know, as studies, and see how they work, how effective are they, you know, shellfish, additional shellfish propagation, you know, the town's doing that upweller project, you know, it'd be great for the tribe to also do some upwelling to create their own seed, so that there's additional seeding within areas that are affected. The shellfish are the only things really clean in the water at this point. It's the only thing effectively clean in the water. So, you know, these are some areas that, I'm not sure how some of these grants work. I haven't done a deep dive into them to better understand what that relationship would look like, but I think through cooperative agreements and things, you know, with, you know, we both have a vested interest in the water quality within these waters, and, you know, from our Aboriginal perspective, tribal perspective, you know, we need it to survive, you know, we eat from these waters and things, so, you know, it behooves both of us to ensure that we're doing everything we can. So, I would suggest that we kind of maybe appoint somebody from both sides to kind of look at areas where there's room for collaboration, look at some grants that might be of interest, and kind of dedicate internal resources to, at least looking at things and thinking comprehensively outside of the box, how we can move forward to that, towards a common end.
So, I've been in the past working with Andrew with the Clean Water Act. We've had some sampling done for all the Mashpee waters with the PFAS, with Silent Spring. They was willing to come and do a presentation, and then COVID happened in January, and things just kind of moved along, but they're still interested in helping us. They have grants, and they were willing to help the tribe.
Silent Spring, Winnie?
Silent Spring, correct. They've been here in the past. I've been working with them for well over five years now, and the Breast Cancer Coalition Board. We all collaborate together and meet priority often every other week, so we're starting to make headway, but they did have a presentation, and I did want to also introduce them to the most of you that haven't been there, because I think it would behoove us to get the water clean, because without that water being clean, then it starts getting worse, because we had some shellfish that had tumors on their eyes and heads that they looked at the water right around here, which means that's the fish that we all eat, so, you know, it's not just tribal people, but even though we're stewards of the land and water, I think it's up to all of us to keep this water clean. And it actually went out towards Flax Pond, which the levels were so high, and a corresponding with the fire extinguisher and foam going down in the water, so they had to shut down Posthum Academy for the fire department. So, and people don't even know, we had to have our own Mashpee water cleaned not too long ago, and we had to do another tank and so forth. So, my only point is, if we can all collaborate together, along with them and with us, because they already have some grants that they were willing to help us out with, I just think the more, the better, so. And they're willing to share that information with the town also, but they wanted to give it to the tribal people first, because that's where we asked. And they also did Poncon Point, which was very high, so. So, that's all.
I mean, we have a handful of, I think, off the top of my head, a handful of priority projects kind of in the mix right now. There's the restoration of Quashna River, and, you know, fixing the collapsed berm from the Air Force, getting that restoration done. There's the Red Brook that culvered, and whether that gets restored as a wetland area, back to what it used to be. A handful of others, obviously, the phase, whatever Phase Two ends up looking like on the wastewater side. But are there, is there any working lists that we could talk about in terms of priority projects, you know, for restoration, or whether it's climate adaptation? You know, a lot of these water quality projects also provide some climate resilience and create some flood storage opportunities. So, are there ones that are of particular importance that the tribe's working on, and who should, you know, depending on, it's either natural resources, conservation, and a lot of the projects actually get built under the guidance of the Department of Public Works. Those are kind of the three key operating departments, I think, that are working on these areas, along with Town Planner. Who should we be working with? How do we learn which things are, which projects and your approach to them are the most important, so we could start to see where there's overlaps? And if we're having a hard time, you know, we apply for money, we don't always get it. You know, if there's a backstop that, you know, through partnership would make that application more attractive to the feds, or if you'd be the lead applicant and we tie into that, you know, how do we figure out where those opportunities lie?
I think that those opportunities are with the Emergency Management Department and the Natural Resource Department. I do want to acknowledge that we do have the Assistant Natural Resource Director here, Dale Oakley, and the Natural Resource Department did send us an email on some of the things that they've collaborated on with the town around water quality and so on and so forth, back to the tribe's funds. It boils down to grant writers. The tribe at one point in time had to do layoffs, and unfortunately, we let go of some of our grant writers. Now, we're to the point where we're hiring people and bringing back grant writers, but also, some of the states and other municipalities get specific funding for Native Americans and federally-recognized tribes. So, it's interesting to see how much money the Commonwealth is actually getting because of the tribe, and if we work collaboratively, I think that that would, you know, entice them more to give more funds to the town and the tribe as a sovereign nation. I do also know that the tribe did receive CARES funds, as well as the town, and the ARPA funds. ARPA funds were allowed to be used for wastewater, so on and so forth. The tribe spent majority of that on housing security, as well as other initiatives, and I think that the tribe's in a great position where regardless of federal funds or grant funds, that the tribe will get into some economic development and start bringing money and revenue into the door to help with a lot of these issues. As we know, this is one of the reasons why, back in the '70s, the tribe was in opposition of the overdevelopment to our lands, and now here we are trying to fix it. You know, it's the second summer now where we've had to shut down our pond, because people can't swim in it, because of all the things that are going on there. And during our powwow, we actually had a water ceremony, and it was after that water ceremony when we brought the water back to the pond, when the pond was actually lifted and we could actually have our canoe raised. So, we believe that some of our ceremonies and things are also things that contribute to the waterways, and I would think that, we can also talk about open space acquisition. I think that the tribe is also in a position to start talking about some of those negotiations with the town as well, so that we can identify some parcels, because the tribe has more needs around housing, wastewater, so on and so forth, just like the town does, but we don't have enough land or the capacity to kind of build out at this point. So, I think that that's a great start. I don't know if Dale, if you have anything for the Natural Resource Department? And also, the Vice Chairman is the liaison to the Natural Resource Commission, and the Natural Resource Commission does meet every other week to work on regulations and help with the shellfish farm as well.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to echo the, some of the sentiments I heard earlier, collaborative effort between municipalities and tribal governments, it's a big thing for federal grants, and a big problem we have kind of is that we go after grants because we need to, and not necessarily, these grants don't last long enough to see the positive effects of some of these efforts we've undertaken over the years. So, just wanted to emphasize that, leave it at that.
Thank you, Dale.
So, oh, sorry, Chairman.
So, oh, sorry Chairman. So, you know, just so we're fully expressing where we're at, you know, the tribe, we do have capacity issues. Most of our funding is grant funding and, you know, roughly eighty, eighty-five, ninety percent of our funding's grant funding. The funding is very project specific, so it doesn't allow for self-determined capacity and, you know, that's a default to federal government and their trust responsibilities. But, you know, at the end of the day, you can only go after so much, you have to still be able to execute the project, you know, as part of the grant and not every grant allows for internal capacity, hiring and things, you know, it's more project specific for, you know, doing studies and constructing and building and addressing the direct need that's identified in the grant proposal. But, you know, without the staff to do it and carry it out, then it gets overwhelming inside. So you have to be very strategic in your planning and, you know, how you pursue grants and move forward and chase grants. With that said, there are some additional, one department I didn't hear mentioned is our Transportation Department through the Tribal Roads Program. I believe, you know, roads that our tribal members travel around. There has been collaboration between the Public Works and Catherine Laurent and Jason Stiding when he was the Director of the Building Roads and Grounds. The BIA does contribute annual funds towards roads. I don't know what, I can't speak for the program at greater length, but I know that they do get federal funds for upgrading roads and things and maybe culverts and roadway layouts that are commonly used by tribal members to get to work, to get to the tribal reservation properties. Those types of roads do, I think, are on the roadway plan that the tribe has. So, you know, it's not just limited to roads that are on reservation to my knowledge.
We did collaborate on Old Barnstable and we did receive that grant. So that was one of those that proved the fruits of our labor, so we should definitely engage in more of those opportunities.
So we might have the staff, the town, to help move these things if money can be brought in and, you know, relieve everybody's burden.
So I think...
We, I'll pass the mic down, but we would certainly be very willing to provide staff, particularly if we were going to collaborate and receive money.
I would also say that, you know, with the internal capacity that we have though, we would fully welcome, I think, I don't think anyone would object if, you know, there were any volunteers out that wanted to help the tribe by writing grants or helping us write grants, you know. It is an area where we're a little light on the staffing. We only have one grant, one or two grant writers on staff currently, you know, and so they're trying to sustain all the different departments and programs that we have internally. So, you know, having volunteers that have writing skills and/or are good at research, you know, it's good to maybe have a list of people that, and what their specific areas are of expertise to try to supplement our internal shotfalls in capacity on acquiring the grants. You know, I think just internal coordination and internal discussions and kind of having conversations more often will facilitate areas like, you know, Dale does the water quality and then there's broader issues when it comes to the environment and natural resources. I know there's a lot of complaints about the roadway down to Hurricane and, you know, Will's Falk Road and stuff, the current condition is not being taken care of at the state level, you know. I think tribal members use that often enough where, you know, maybe there's collaboration with the state on that, you know, but the other area that I see is with the Land and Water Conservation Fund. You know, there's things like that and then the President's Initiative for, what, thirty by thirty preserving and protecting water, waters, thirty percent of the world's oceans and things like that, you know, there's, there's other types of fundings along those lines, I think, that maybe the tribe could collaborate on to identify areas of conservation and waterfront, land conservation waterfront, I think, is an area where, you know, if there's specific areas that are threatened to be developed and things, then, you know, maybe look at trying to get them for public benefit and because, to preserve the waters around them, you know, collaborate on those types of things as well. There is a need for, as Chairman stated, the tribe only went after, only had a limited amount of land to go after for our land into trust petition. You know, if we had water that was adjacent, land that was adjacent to water, say oceanfront or something like that and we were able to put it into trust, then I think that would open the door to bring in additional funding even. So, you know, that type, those kind of conversations, what's out there, what's available, looking at identifying lands that may benefit, you know, both of us in the long term is another conversation for a future agenda.
I think this is great talk with, you know, if we're talking about the collaboration, but it sounds like there's so many more topics as we talk, we're only at topic two and it's amazing how much work we have in front of us. So I actually, you know, I would like to kind of get a better understanding of where, what bodies of water would be like top on your priority list from tribal perspective and then maybe have additional subcommittee meetings that we could, you know, actually dig in and talk about that and then we can bring it to the next level as far as, okay, now do collaboration and, you know, propose, request for grant money and to actually go after and tackle, you know, one-off these, you know, these challenges because there's a lot of them. I mean, there's, there's so many topics that we're going around here and, which is great, but I think this is the whole collaboration where now let's just, you know, dig in, find out what your priority was, you know, it's, if it's Santuit Pond, you know, per se, you know, like, okay, now how can we tackle Santuit Pond? What, you know, from your perspective, your team, our team, put all the minds together and then how are we going to fund it? Now we go after the grant level and attack the projects, but I think this is great collaboration talk.
We are right now currently collaborating on Santuit, on Santuit Pond, on a grant opportunity right now and to Mr. Collins' point, I would say Jason, Jason Stiding would be the point of contact for any type of collaboration, grant opportunities, along with Dale Oakley would be your contact person for the water quality. But I guess my question would also be regarding this topic, the water quality. I believe the state, I thought they came out with a plan of recommended phases to start with, Phase One versus Phase Two and Phase One kind of addressed Wacoit Bay and the bays. Did that plan change on the town level of the recommendation from the state? And if so, why did that change happen to address different bodies of water than the state recommendation?
So I think you're referring to the town's nitrogen management plan, which is, you know, we've got five potential phases associated with it. The plan was created to restore the water quality of Popanessen Wacoit Bay by limiting the nitrogen loading going into those two embayments primarily from septics, although stormwater and fertilizer also contribute. So the plan, as it was adopted in the mid-twenty teens, remains in effect. Phase One that we authorized at town meeting, the treatment plant and the initial sewer ring area, so in the area immediately adjacent to the transfer station and across twenty-eight down Quiniquisette Avenue like halfway, is currently out to bid. We anticipate awarding a contract by September thirtieth and then breaking ground shortly thereafter. That's probably a two-year build, get the treatment plant up and running, get the sewer pipes in, get them, get people hooked up, so, but roughly two years from the time we break ground. So think, you know, fall of twenty-four, spring of twenty-five to be operational. Phase Two currently contemplates going further down Quiniquisette, pretty much down to Mashpee Neck, down to the marina, that area and a lot of the residences off to the east side of that, almost over to toward Kootuwa Bay condos. And then a little bit more expansion of that area and then beginning to take on the area around Johns and Ashuman Pond to begin the process of lowering the loads to Wacoit Bay. Phase Three goes a little bit further in both the Wacoit watershed and further south in the Popanessa watershed and further north. All along, the plan relies on a certain amount of nitrogen removed by the shellfish propagation and how far into Phase Three, potentially to Phase Four, potentially to Phase Five, we would have to go as a function of how well those shellfish investments as well as the sewer ring investments perform in terms of changing the water quality in the embayments. The current plan does not specifically with intent address the nutrient loading problems in, in the freshwater ponds. They ultimately get soured the further into the five phases that you go, but not for the purpose of improving water quality in the ponds, but for the purpose of reducing the nitrogen that finds its way to the embayments. There has been talk in the last year of modifying Phase Two to incorporate some short-term, near-term, like next five years, sewer ring of the ponds, shore fronts and areas around the ponds to both reduce the nitrogen that makes it to the bay as well as improving water quality in the ponds because the ponds merit remediation just like the embayments do. That plan has been nothing but talk yet. There's been no modification, formal modification of the plan. It's a series of ideas that remain to be evaluated. Some of us feel more strongly about pushing that reevaluation than others, but were we to vary from the existing nitrogen plan that was locally generated but state-approved, we would have to file a notice of project change with MEPA and say, we were going to do this and now we're going to do this and this is why and this is what we think the results are going to be. None of those decisions have been made yet.
Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I, I sit and I listen and I, what I'm hearing is a perfect blend of teamwork here. From the way I see it, the way I hear it, is that we're both looking for the same thing. You want to protect the waters, we want to protect the waters. We want to have a healthy environment, you want a healthy environment. You can't hire, you don't have the funds to go after the, the engineering work and the, all the tech, all the work that has to go in before you can file these problems. But that's where the town comes in. We are going to be doing that. We can do that and we can have those tests and all of that, the evaluations done and taken care of. That's where you come in because you've said, specifically you said, that the state or the government is looking to be helpful towards the tribe and, and help the tribe to have better, better waterways. That's where you come in. If they want to really help the tribe, you can use our work, the town of Mashpee's work. It's your water as well. Now you can come in and say, we need to help our waterways, we need to get things back on track. I see this as a simple, excellent opportunity to work together as a team and we, we, the town of Mashpee does the work, the legwork, gets the, get all the studies and all of these things on paper so they're filed. You go in and ask for money, we go in and ask for money, the town of Mashpee and the tribe for the same reason, but you had, those are your, your hunting grounds, your fishing grounds, that's your Aboriginal rights. The town of Mashpee, we're using it for fishing, boating and whatnot, but I think it's a perfect way to walk in and say, we, and we both get monies from the federal government to clean up the bays. And I think, I think it just works out perfectly. Thank you.
One, one, one issue that, one issue that I see as part of the larger problem is that, you know, for a long time, focus has been on the bays because they're declining quickly and, you know, the shellfish industry is a big advocate and has a lot of funds to lobby and things, you know, but they're not, they're not looking at the freshwater bodies enough. So, you know, the way that a lot of the regulations are in, is they're targeting the nitrogen, which ponds, you know, scientifically, the scientists tell you that ponds can handle as much nitrogen as you put in them, it doesn't really affect the ponds. What affects the ponds and freshwater bodies is the phosphorus. Now, some of the biggest contributors to the phosphorus problems are still wastewater and also, you know, the gray water and the brown water, so laundry detergents and things that are also found within your septic systems and leach fields. Those things are all compounding the problems on our, on our lakes, ponds and rivers. So, you know, but on the back end, at the end of the estuary, you know, the bays are taking the effect of all the accumulative effects of the nitrogen coming, which is transported by the water and rainfall and making its way out to the bay. So, you know, there's two different problems. Supposedly the bays can handle the phosphorus, they just can't handle the nitrogen. The freshwater is just the opposite. But, you know, our ponds, I think, are screaming to us in, in their own way that, you know, now after 2020, you have more year-round residents living here. And so it's ironic that in twenty, you know, in 2020 and 2021, you know, you started seeing the cyanobacteria and it's gotten to the point where, you know, they're shutting the pond down on the front end of summer when the water's cold, it shouldn't even be happening in a pond that deep, you know what I mean? That, that, that's, we're at critical mass now with that. So, you know, I think we need to do everything we can on both sides to try to protect the waters and clean them up and, you know, I, I understand the logic behind, you know, the ponds can handle the nitrogen, it's not, it's not a nitrogen issue, you know, and they want to focus on the bays, but I also have to have the logic that, you know, address the problem at the head of the, take and cut the head of the snake off instead of trying to, you know, deal with it at the tail. It just stands to reason, you know, so I think we need to do both, look at things more comprehensively, don't try and solve one issue. It wasn't one issue that created the problem and it's not going to be one issue that solves it.
Just to touch base on a few issues and topics, the shellfish grant that the tribes had since the seventies, I believe, the tribe and the vice chairman, and we did meet with the town manager to address some of those concerns. We really don't have concerns at this time. We think that we've worked out a lot of those mishaps and that hurdle, but that is something that helps to contribute to our bays. And we're also in the process of looking into a HACCP facility that the vice chairman's been working on so we can produce our own shellfish and we have a lot of issues with our tribal members. As soon as they leave, they're being harassed by the EPOs and so on and so forth, going into shellfish markets and being told if you take any shellfish from a tribal member, you know, they're just going to take it, saying it's contaminated or so on and so forth. So the state's kind of messing with the tribe more so around our Aboriginal rights and the shellfish. Town manager's been very cooperative and helpful with those matters in regards to the town, so we don't really have issues there. I think that also utilizing our federal relationships and our federal partners, sometimes letters from our delegation, senators, representatives will go a long way with, you know, our requests for proposals and anything else that we go after as a joint effort to show that we're working collaboratively. And sometimes you're more apt to get some of those grant funds because those are the senators and the delegation that's approving a lot of those funds at the federal level. So the tribe would be willing to use our lobbying team and our federal relationships and collaborative efforts. I think that the tribe, to Selectman Cotton's point, the priorities are all of our ponds and waterways. As we know, the tribal members still consume herring, the river herring that come up. Unfortunately, you can only use them more for bait now and using them for fertilizer as they're probably not edible just because of all the toxicity in the ponds. So Santuit, as we know, is to the point where we're past maybe no return and that is a pond that a lot of tribal members have lived around and hunted and fished in. And then the Mashpee Pond is clearly a priority because it kind of ties into our name about being the place of the great waters. being the place of the great waters and a lot of our tribal elders, and that's been the center of the tribe's existence since time immemorial. In discussions to land, the tribe is actively meeting with Joint Base Cape Cod and having active discussions on the land disposition and the decommissioning of the land out there. We had a productive meeting with the Air Force, and our next step is meeting with the Coast Guard to talk about some of the federal lands that reside on the 130 and the airstrip. Obviously, there might be some hurdles that the tribe might have to go after depending on if they use the state or the federal lands, but I think that's also an opportunity for the town to collaborate with the tribe to get back some of our ancestral territory and parts of the town. Also, a collaborative effort with the Native Land Conservancy, although the Native Land Conservancy is not a tribally-owned entity, it is operated by tribal members and was founded by Ramona Peters. And the Native Land Conservancy is in collaboration with the Conservation Commission with the restoration of Chopchick Bog. And then also, last but not least, the tribe does have grant-writing workshops. We try to make all of our directors beef up their grant-writing skills so that all the directors are going after grants, not just our grant writers. So the tribe would be willing to have grant-writing workshops and invite the town and the employees so we can all work collaboratively on those efforts.
Okay, so maybe the thing that makes sense is for us to take you up on that and work through manager's office, try and figure out how to get our staff properly coordinated with your departments to take advantage of some of those opportunities. Make sense? Okay. So we've kind of walked around it. The next two items were Santuit Pond and Mashpee Wakeby. David, you suggested we put these both on. Have we covered them? Are there more things that we should be talking about?
Pretty much, I think we, you know, did touch base on, at different times, on both. You know, I just wanted to add that, you know, I think any of the water bodies, having some sort of parcel that's adjacent to it would make a difference. And so, you know, big or small, you know, even if it's an area for folks to put their boats and, you know, the parcel's taken into trust, then just the fact that it's adjacent to, you know, allows the tribe, I think, opportunities to go after funding. So it's the fact that it's adjacent to or, you know, or has the water encompassed in it. You know, like the parcel over on Santuit, the Marsha Farm, the property line goes to the center line of the river, whereas over at the Indian, the museum on 130, it goes to the western bank, so it doesn't encompass the river, but it's still adjacent to it. That... Those little things like that make a difference with how the tribe is associated with the water and funding opportunities that I think they can go after. So, you know, the Quashnet River, you know, Johns Pond, any of the bodies of water, you know, because Quashnet and Mashpee are so impacted, we keep hearing Brian Howes reports that those rivers are in terrible condition, you know, those ponds that feed into those rivers, I think, are areas where I'd like to see, you know, at least some sort of parcel that is abutting it. We already abut, I think, Mashpee and Santuit. We don't abut the pond, but we abut the Mashpee River. You know, if there was any kind of little parcels around the Santuit Pond at the top of the headwaters, and, you know, same with Johns Pond, I think those areas are areas of concern. Any pond, anything that abuts the bays, Walk White, Papanessa, you know, those areas, you know, even if our guys have areas to launch their boats or stall boats, you know, I think is beneficial to the tribe to some extent, even without the funding opportunities associated to it. So, you know, things like that are just little ways that I think support the tribe incrementally in ways. Having letters of support and different types of initiatives like Chairman was mentioning. We do have advocates working on our behalf. There is a bill sitting in the sub... One of the subcommittees that Sheldon Whitehouse put forward that, you know, these wind farms I keep talking about, their federal government's going to get a lot of money out of those wind farms. And there's a bill before the House, I think there's a version in the House and the Senate at the federal level, and they're... The proposal is that instead of the federal government getting the 100% bulk of the money going to the Land and Water Conservation Fund, that trickles down to, you know, Clean Waters Act and other funds like the Historic Preservation Act, then the states get 50% or 75% of that money. And it would be earmarked specifically for states that lie within 75 miles of the nucleus of these projects that are being built off the coast. And so those... That type of initiative, that would create a substantial amount of funding for coastal regions to address coastal problems like water quality and things like that. So, you know, if the town has anybody acting on their behalf that could, you know, advocate for that moving forward, then I would encourage the town to utilize those mechanisms. You know, I haven't seen it have any forward movement in a while, but there was a gentleman from Louisiana in Sheldon Whitehouse where I think the two individuals that proposed it, I think it's the... What is it called? The RISE... RISE Act, R-I-S-E-E. And I believe it was brought forward before last year's Congress, and it really hasn't had any movement yet, but there's additional people signed on to it.
Right. So does that adequately cover Mashpee Wakeby and Santuit for you?
Yes.
Chair, should we move on? Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll sort of turn the next two over to you, Mr. Chair. You talked about tribal member issues and then discussion of tax-exempt issues pertaining to tribal members. Not quite sure what you had in mind, so...
I wanted to give this opportunity to some of our tribal members or our elected tribal council leadership to address some of the issues that we hear from some of our tribal members. I know that one of the biggest issues I think that we should address while we have this time and this opportunity is the Mashpee Wakeby Pond. As we know, last year, we had a lot of outside-town residents that were coming down. The parking became an issue. We are now starting to see a lot of that happen again, where now people are getting dropped off down there. There's grills on the beaches, you know, there's pop-ups, canopies on the beaches that aren't allowed. It gets to the point where tribal members are the ones telling them, you know, that they're not allowed to do this. And I think that that's just because they come after hours, after the gate attendants and lifeguards are gone, so on and so forth. But it's caused some tension in the tribe because when tribal members want to go down there, any of our town residents, they no longer have those picnic tables. They don't have grills anymore, and these people are not only taking up all the grills that are down there, but then they're bringing in their grills. And then some of the trash afterwards is just ridiculous. And I know that in the past, a lot of times, it seems like the tribal members have always been the ones that were labeled about, you know, loitering and disrespecting a lot of those lands, and that's really not the case. And my fear is that if the town and the tribe doesn't work together collaboratively on this effort, that it could get dangerous, and we could see some fighting and other things, I think, happen down there, and that's something that I don't think any of us want to see. And it's not fair to tribal members, but it's also not fair to our taxpayers who also go down there. I see a couple of familiar faces in the crowd that love to go down there and enjoy theirselves, and it's becoming more and more of an issue as it goes on. So I just wanted to at least start and bring that to the town's awareness, and I don't know if...
Mr. Chair, how do we... What's your suggestion on how we begin to tackle that one?
Well, I think the first thing we can do is start working on policing and, you know, showing a lot more of ourselves down there. I know that when the people were parking at the museum, we had tribal police come down there and work with them to let them know that, "Hey, we're going to close the gate and you're going to get towed," or something like that. I think that if there's people that are parking, I'm sure Nuckabout has the same problem just as the community park does. Now they're parking more towards the Community Garden and Park and the Mashpee Baptist Church parking lot. But I think that we just need more help. Maybe you put a gate attendant down there until you close the park or something else like that, or just have the police come down there more and make a presence, because my problem is more about the safety, I think, at this point then.
Tom, can you hit the microphone down, Rodney?
Mr. Chair, do you think if the board adopted some parking regulations that encompassed the area in question, that it could make a significant enough difference that would satisfy you? Or is it going to take more than the parking regulations? And what I'm specifically referring to is if certain designated areas, whatever they may be, were inclusive of a Mashpee resident sticker and a tribal sticker. Is that going to be sufficient, or is it going to involve more than that? Because if that's what it's going to take, I just have to go to the board, and I think I can get that done.
If that's amenable as a starting point, I don't know if we can predict whether it's sufficient, but it might be a starting point. If that would be an adequate starting point, we can schedule that up.
Because that's...
This summer.
As they say, that's low-hanging fruit for me, to just go to the board.
Yeah, I think that the parking is definitely one way to tackle the problem. It seems like the parking isn't so much a problem down there because obviously they're outside residents, so they don't have the tribal member cards or beach stickers from the tribe or the town's beach stickers, so they're just getting dropped off. I think that the problem is more so them violating the rules and the policies that everybody else. I mean, I don't know how many times I've had tribal members that get no trespassing orders down there on their own land, but then you have these outsiders who can come down here and break the rules or do other things. And majority of them, sometimes they don't speak English, they speak Portuguese or any other, whatever ethnicity they might be, and it's getting more and more of a problem. So how do I try to hold tribal members accountable when, you know, they see others that aren't being held accountable? And our concerns are more so with the glass on the beach, you know, our kids play on the beach, or their grills on the beach because of the coals and the sand and so on and so forth. So that's why it's more of a healthy, a health perspective for the tribe.
In terms of the no trespass, that would only be in the extreme conditions. Generally, that's somebody that is threatening staff, or if that's somebody that has allegedly pulled out a gun. We've had a couple of other incidents, but in terms of any specificity, if there is a situation where there is somebody harassing a tribal member or being disrespectful or engaged in any other conduct that I say shocks the conscience, we're certainly willing to address that on a case-by-case basis, and we're certainly willing to listen and hear all of the circumstances that would be attached to a situation where any tribal member or any person down there is being harassed, being treated with some just totally disrespectful conduct. We want to make sure that you can go down there and use the grills, have a family outing, and do so in a very peaceful way without being harassed in any shape or form.
Is there... Rodney, is there any... For my... Is there any, to your knowledge, and it might not be a fair question off the cuff, we've had issues where we bought community park land using state money, and that creates some obligations to keep it open to non-residents of the town. I don't believe this property falls into that category. Do we have the ability, do you know, or can we explore whether we can, you know, do a residence and tribal member limitation that allows us to do a little bit more?
Certainly, that's worth exploring. I mean, anything that is going to create a harmonious environment for residents and tribal members to get out in there.
Because we did that at Johns Pond Park, what, two summers, two seasons ago? And when there were, you know, people from not within Mashpee coming, it was creating some neighborhood issues, much similar to what you're talking about, Mr. Chair. We did do that, and I think that helped, as I recall. So maybe something like that. Again, I don't know whether there are some liaisons that maybe could work with, you know, people who are often, you know, if the police come down there, they're coming down periodically, obviously. I don't think anybody wants to station a police officer at the beach all day. That's not the atmosphere we're trying to create, to make people feel like they're being watched for a screw-up. But, you know, there may be some people that are at the beach a lot, representing the tribe, who might be able to, you know, we can forge a little bit tighter communication and relationship between them and the police so that you can get a little bit of lay of the land of what's going on. Might help.
I think one of the other issues too is, I think, I don't know for certain, but I'm going to suggest that maybe sometimes it's more of a reactive approach than a proactive approach. In other words, they're responding to a call for service rather than going down there and doing the visibility patrols. So, Counton, maybe you and I ought to go down there.
So really quick, I brought this to the attention of even the police department one. It was like a... One time, it was the Race Amity event. They was taking their jet skis, dropping them off at the town landing, dropping their trailers back off at the Mashpee Baptist Church. They said, "Well, it's a community park." I said, "Well, community for our tri... Our community." I said, and this was when COVID was kind of high, too. I said, "We wonder why our beaches are filled with people from out of town, and what they do is they get there so early, like, early, and they set up. So by the time any tribal member gets there, the whole place is packed with Brazilians." And so the last time I went down there, there's a couple of problems because the park rec asked me if I could help coordinate with the trash and so forth. There's not enough trash bins down there, number one. That's the biggest problem. I was picking up trash from the non-residents and putting it in bags, and I didn't even have enough space to put it in the one that's way across the way. So I had my own trash bag, and I stuck it beside there, tried to stick it on top. You have two Brazilian groups that were, I thought, together, and one had some loud music with a box going, and then all of a sudden, this kid started setting up something. I go, "Is he doing a battery?" No, he was charging something. The box was this big, and he decides he's going to put it on top of the car and drown out that one. And I walked off, I was like, "Uh-uh. He didn't know what I was saying with English? You'll know this. Uh-uh." And he says, "No?" I said, "No, you're going to give me a headache, one or the other." So he shut his down. But I think if there was even a police presence just driving through, you know...
Same thing.
You don't have to sit there, station there, that presence, you know? And they know. And I know there were some firecrackers going off near the Fourth of July weekend. They thought there were shotguns down there. But in my neighborhood, I have them on... I live on Lehman-Telane, I have them on four corners of me all the time, all night long. So I think you can't pick and choose because, yes, it's a hot night, and I think also closing them gates, going back to closing them gates at, I don't know, when it gets cool off, nine o'clock, that's it, or dusk, because that's the other problem. You have the gates open, then you have people coming in after hours and just hanging out. That could eliminate a lot of it, too.
Do you want us to close the gates?
Well, yes.
It's not... I mean, it would be helpful to understand that.
Yes.
Generally, the pressure's been, "Don't close gates."
Well, I hear about that, but I see on Facebook people coming from out of town, coming to our pond to have parties and scraping the gates because they don't know it's there. So I'm just being observant, you know? I don't... I don't know what you all want to do, but if you don't want to shut the gates, that's fine, but I think it would eliminate a lot of problems, too, for the Mashpee Gate at a certain time.
What we were trying to do is actually create an environment where more tribal members could come down there and enjoy a hot summer night. That's why we changed the gates. I'll be frank with you. But we're certainly open to doing anything differently, but we do want to collaborate. I think we're talking about also two different things here because I think one might be a little bit of a parking issue, which I think is the easiest thing to control...
It is.
...through the board. And then the second thing is when people are getting dropped off, and I don't know where they're going with their vehicle, maybe they're going elsewhere and coming back and picking the jet ski up or something like that. That is something that we're going to have to handle a little differently because that is a little more difficult to police, to be frank with you. But those situations that you described with the boombox or whatever it is, we got to try to control not only the level of noise, but also the interference with the folks who are down there. but also the interference with the folks who are down there just trying to enjoy the beach. And we certainly want to create a quality environment. And we understand that that's sacred ground for the tribal members that go down there. We do recognize that.
Well, I will be honest with you. I was down there back in the day before the coronavirus. And when we were closing the gates, it was still so hot out. It was like seven o'clock, you know, it's still bright out, the kids are still in the water, and then the police would come down. So we would just hurry, pack up and just get out of there. Seven o'clock's way too early because at any other beach, people are still in the water. So I'm just saying the after hours where you're talking nine o'clock at night, I don't understand why somebody just can't go down there and shut the gates. And as far as the parking with the non-residents, you should have a limited of parking for the tribal members and the ones with the town stickers, and then shut it off and find another community parking, whether on that weekend it's at the community gardens or wherever. Because for me, when you go down there and you can't even drive through sometimes, just drive through and drive out, it's so packed, it's so condensed. You cannot find a spot unless somebody else leaves. And they stay there all day from out of town because they're not going back to the city. It's way too hot. So they're there to the wee hours, so.
I do, I do know that, you know, when we met and talked about the gates and things, one of the issues was that we raised was the hours in which they were being closed. That was, you know, coming and closing it down at eight thirty in the middle of the summer when the sun's still out, you know, it just was not, it didn't make sense, you know? And so, so we appreciate the town, you know, keeping them open and such. You know, to Councilwoman Graham's point, you know, having folks, you know, congregating down there late, late at night, that's, you know, nothing good happens late, late at night, you know? So that is a concern, but I wouldn't want to ruin it for folks that know how to go down there and behave themselves, or maybe folks that go down early, early in the morning. So I'm not sure, you know, what side of the fence I would, I would advocate for on that one as far as locking the gates again. You know, I think a little more policing, going down a couple of times over the course of the night, maybe that solves the issue, you know? One of the other things that I know I've heard from tribal members though is on both elders and people of different generations is the boats. You know, there's so many boats out there on the lake and the size of the boats and, you know, the number of jet skis and things and going, going back and forth. And, you know, when you start factoring in cyanobacteria and it primarily starts over in Wakeby Side, the times that we've identified it, and then, you know, it ends up coming into Mashpee, you know? I understand the flow goes that direction, but are the boats contributing to that cross contamination if they're in there churning everything up? You know, so if there's any kind of cyanobacteria blooms that are, you're starting to see trace amounts of, shut the pond down on boats. You know what I mean? Don't, don't let them continue to stir that stuff up and encourage, you know, promote the cross contamination between the two bodies, you know? That, because our, our kids are primarily swimming on the Wakeby Side, I mean, on the Mashpee Side of Adequan Park, you know? And when that gets shut down, you know, there's a lot of families that are disappointed that, you know, rely on that because it's cost effective to entertain the kids in the summer, you know? And, you know, those things are important to, you know, the families. That's, I know, a couple of things that I've heard.
So just real quick, I mean, it sounds like, it's, obviously it's not one fix for a lot of these little issues. But I will tell you, from the Johns Pond issue concern we had, I do, I would strongly recommend if, if this is the way, if you would like to impose potential parking restrictions, I think that might be a good start. And I, you know, I'm just speaking personally, I have no problem with it. I think it's great. Because again, it's about, you're all, we're all Mashpee residents, you know, members of the tribe. That's it. If you're not, you, you can't provide evidence of that, sorry, go elsewhere. Because a lot of other towns have restricted it and have not allowed, and that's why they come here, because they can. So I'm sorry, but, you know, you know, taxpayers, that's who we're responsible for. So if that's what you decide to do, I mean, it's the same thing with, you know, leaving the gate open till, you know, leaving the gate open forever or if you want us to put a time on it, that's something that, whatever, you know, consensus is, whatever you decide.
I think what you're hearing, Mr. Chair and Councilwoman Graham, is that there's a lot of openness trying to deal with it. You're, I think, appropriately respectful of the fact that, you know, we don't want to be seen as trying to limit tribal access to the, to the location. And so if there's a specific set of things that the council wants to ask us to do, I'll commit, we'll schedule. And this is a summer thing, so it's not like, let's take three months, figure it out because then you've lost your summer. So if you want us to act, you know, whether it's permit restrictions, parking restrictions, there's certain, I don't know whether we have seven or fourteen day notice requirements, whatever they are, if there's things you want us to do on part resident parking, tribal member parking, restrictions. I share your frustration on people launching and parking elsewhere because it creates enormous problems away from the beach, on the water, and really puts the Department of Natural Resources staff in an awkward position because at some point, a certain density of boats creates hazards. And so, you know, we've limited town hall parking. We don't allow any launching while the gate attendants are there when the facility is full. If there's people parking in any one of our things, we could put a resident only requirement or no trailer parking and enforce it on the weekends. And, you know, so if there's specific things you want us to consider, we're committing. I think that we'll certainly consider them and we'll schedule them up and try and get them implemented. We're reluctant and cautious to come up with ideas on our own and oppose them because I think that that then has the potential for unfairly or unintentional impacts on tribal members. So I think we'd like to react to what you would like to see done at that facility and we'll do our best to try and accommodate or at least schedule it and have that discussion.
Could I suggest that we get a group, a working group together, like six or eight? Four from the tribe or three from the tribe and three or four from the town. I'm thinking DNR, recreation, maybe somebody from the police department, and equal tribal members, and have a nice working group to come up with some proposals that are vetted through the tribe as well as the, the working group. And then finally, we bring it to the select board for adoption of these areas.
That's fine, it has to happen fast because summer's fleeting. I said, it has to happen fast because the summer's fleeting.
Well, I can only work so fast.
No, I know, I'm just saying, if you want to do that, I think, fine idea, we'll do it.
I think moving forward, it would give you some relief for some of the issues that have been brought up this evening.
It could be that some of these are no brainers and you quickly come to consensus that's what you want us to do and we'll do them.
There could be something that could happen really quick. And then there could be some other things that might take a little while longer to make sure that we're on the same page and we're not getting into something that is going to mean us difference.
It might solve one part of the problem and that dampens down some of the other ones. It gives us a little more time.
I think the quarterly meetings, if we, if we stay on track with the quarterly meetings with yourself and the officers as we did, because we, we set up that same type of group that you were talking about with the parking recreation, David Parknet, Shelley Parknet. There was about six of us two years ago when we came on the gate issue. And we do appreciate the town opening the gate to, you know, be able to have ceremonies of sort. But I think if we stay on the quarterly meetings, and I think the easy, the real quick easy fix is the tribal ID and parking sticker. I think that's, like you say, low hanging fruit that we don't need a, a big meeting to make. You know, that's at least one effort that can solve the problem right away.
And I think maybe, I know COVID kind of kicked us back, but maybe we could restart our meetings and get things moving.
So if we went ahead and like I said, I don't remember whether, Wayne, is it seven? If we did a no parking, you know, or resident parking, you know, the street lake Ave.
Just public notice.
How long, is it a week or is it just a public?
Just a public notice.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing, how much notice do we have to provide?
Ten days.
All right, so we're next meeting on Monday. We don't have ten days, but maybe we can post it as quickly as we can and we'll do a special meeting and just adopt it rather than wait until the second week in August. So that work as a starting point and then that gives everybody time to work through some of these other things, but deal with the parking issues in all the public facilities immediately within the area. So draw a big circle between the beach, community gardens, town parking, community garden and town hall parking lot and say stickers. Stickers, tribal ID. And I also don't know whether tribal member doesn't have a town sticker, how do you identify the car?
I mean, when I, when I don't have a sticker, I use, I put my tribal ID in my windshield everywhere.
That would be acceptable?
That's what we've kind of been talking about.
People would be happy with that?
But yeah, and tribal police, Kevin Frye, who's also the captain of tribal police and a local police officer can help with any issues that, any hiccups, but yeah, that's.
You guys okay having a special meeting sometime before the end of the month to try and do this? All right, so is that done?
Good. I just got my, my, my two tribal council issues. One of them being, I talked to Mr. Collins about the gate issues around different roads. That was something that was talked about at our first initial meeting with the officers. And that's still kind of a sticking point for us of not having access to our Aboriginal roads that are actually on our federal register with the IR, you know, with our IRR planning roads and that we receive federal funds for to take care of these roads. And not having access to them, we can't actually take care of them. So I know the dumping issue was a big thing for the town and the reason why a lot of these gates were up. But we have to have some type of collaboration and a working relationship around access to these roads and access to these gates to allow us to actually exercise our Aboriginal rights in different ways to these roads. So I just think that's a sticking point that we have to cross. And that's, that's one issue and then you can address that.
I think, and I've spoken to the vice chair about this issue and, and every time I've brought it up operationally, there's been a issue at the conservation level. I think maybe what we can do is get to the point where we know when the gate is going to be opened. And I think you and I discussed in the past the possibility of mutually having it opened or locked at the tribal level and getting cooperation from your staff and give that some sort of a run to see how that goes. The problem in the past has been, and I'm not saying it's tribal members, so I don't want to, I don't want to get that perception, but there's been a lot of illegal dumping out there and that's been the issue. So that's what we're trying to prevent, but at the same time, I think we can reach some common ground and get your problem somewhat resolved.
All right.
I thought when we, we had talked about it, when Jason and Stiding met with you on. There was a conversation about opening, opening them, you know, during the day, maybe locking them at night. At that point in time, Jason was still in charge of our Building Roads and Grounds program and he said that he was willing to have his guys assist with, you know, locking, unlocking. So it wasn't all on the town. I think we provided a map that identified kind of key areas where particular gates may want to be opened as a trial period. I think Jason or somebody suggested putting trail cams up at the, as you go in just to identify, you know, if, if something's noticed, then, then you're able to go back and retrieve some sort of documentation to see who the culprit was. You know, I do encourage that sort of thing, that approach more so than gating areas. You know, there's elders that want to go down and forage for particular types of medicine that you can only get in certain areas and things. You know, and if conservation has an issue with anything, then, you know, maybe they should talk to some of these elders because, you know, they're, they're not going to be impacting the area and damaging it, you know? These people have been foraging for most of their lives, you know, before the town was developed as much as this. And with all the development, these places to get certain things are getting harder to find. So it's only in those remote areas that are in conservation where some of these things still grow that they can utilize. So, you know, it is important. I do share Vice Chairman's concerns that, you know, that something needs to be done, you know, maybe not leaving them open all the time, but a shared approach of monitoring and policing, I think, would, would help get us to where we need to be to allow some sort of access, you know, during daylight hours and things.
I think if we come up with a formalized operational plan as we just described, we can move forward. I know it was discussed and never implemented to the extent that you wanted it to be, but I certainly see no reason why we can't at least get that going on a trial basis. And let's see what the effects are.
Okay. And my second, my second tribal council or tribal member issue would be the affordable housing. I believe the town of Mashpee is one of the most towns that have, biggest increase in volume and growing, and their affordable housing is probably, I believe, maybe one of the lowest in percentage as far as what do we have for affordable housing. And I'm more concerned as the elders liaison, Councilman Toby is the elders' chairperson to that committee. And I guess my, my concern is with tribal elders and the affordable housing. If a tribal elder is on that affordable housing list, I believe is that they should have first preference over a non-resident of affordable housing. Seeing that a lot of our tribal elders are placed in, off Old Boncible Road and I don't believe we have any tribal members in the senior living, anywhere in the senior living. The only place our tribal elders are placed are off Old Boncible Road. And I just, I think that needs to change. I think the query requirements that go back and do the query checks, that go back into people's background over thirty years. So I just, I just, I'm looking for a change in the process on how tribal elders' application in affordable housing realm is viewed and looked at, especially for a non-resident to get affordable housing over a tribal elder that's on that, on that list. As I said, I'm the liaison to the elders and that is a concern that has come across my table numerous times. And if we can address it in some way, at least look at it to see what that process is like and see if we can try to fix it and address it. Because to have our tribal elders only sectioned in one, one facility is definitely not right. So anyway, we can try to address that is my only second issue and after that.
Give us a chance to look into that.
Okay.
We'll report back on a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. Other than that, I'm good, thank you.
And I just want to say, there's a lot of rules that we don't implement, but I understand your point.
Thank you. All right, anything else, tribal council?
One other thing that I know I've heard from a lot of different younger generation is, you know, the area that we call, refer to as Twelve Acres, up above the Adequan Park, there's a lot of tribal members who would love to see the tri- tribe acquire that so that they could restore the village that was being constructed when that Mashpee Nine incident happened. A lot of, a lot of young people are connected, kind of feel a connection to that place. And, you know, I think a project like that would be consistent with the historic district that, you know, as a center of town and kind of a tourist draw. To have something like that, it would contribute to the one-room schoolhouse and some of the other historic areas within that district being, being identified as a kind of tourist destination. So I just wanted to throw that out there that I, I do hear that from. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, that I do hear that from our young people.
Would you like to see certain work done up there to make that more compatible, like through DPW? Or, I'm not sure what...
Well, I think this is one of the things, right, that, you know, Chairman and I talked about, you know, fought for a good, you know, more robust conversation. Have a subsequent meeting where we can lay some groundwork to understand what the parameters might be so that when we get these two groups together, we get a couple of things beyond the idea. Putting ideas worthwhile, but I think we need to work some of these things out.
Or get some historical funds from CPC.
They're there.
Alright, if there's no other tribal member issues, the next discussion was the tax exemption issues pertaining to tribal members. As we know, the board is considering tax exemptions for certain town residents that do apply. Everyone's gotten those intake forms that they have to fill out and send back to the assessors department, I believe. The tribe's stance on taxes first, besides the fact that we all know that the town was taken or the land was taken illegally, and a lot of our tribal members' lands were lost for land taxes and property taxes. When the land, when the town did the land disposition project, the tribe identified all of those town-owned parcels and traced them back to direct descendants of those people who were part of the original allotment act when the town was incorporated against the tribe's will. When it comes to tax exemptions, tribal members feel as if, one, they shouldn't be paying taxes to land that was illegally taken, and it's kind of been ours for time immemorial. And our job is to take care of the land, there's not really a monetary value that some of us put to the land. And the fact that majority of our tribal citizens have lost their land for back taxes. I think that if the town's going to consider tax exemptions, that tribal members should also be considered in that exemption. I think this is an easier way than to steer up any kind of conversations about IGAs or land suitcases, so on and so forth. I do also think that this is an opportunity for the tribe and the town to work collaboratively together, because what constitutes a land grab in the IGA? If all of our tribal members were to sign over their land and give it to the tribe, and the tribe wanted to go and place it in trust, you know, would that be an option instead of just taking it off the tax roll and the tax burden? I think that that is a much larger conversation for us to have, but I did want to bring it to the attention of the select board as we talk about tax exemptions in the town and just where the tribe stands on that issue.
I mean, I think that is enormously large issue. And one, obviously, we're not fully prepared to address tonight. I think what I can say in response, hopefully without getting into trouble, is the residential exemption that the town is currently considering. You know, we work within confines of what state law allows us to do. And I think that the underlying premise there, I know is problematic for you. You restated it, I've heard it before, about how land came to be dispersed to non-tribal members. I think that, you know, we've proposed and are considering the residential exemption as a way to provide some limited tax relief to the year-round resident, primary resident of the town, which I think would be pretty inclusive of tribal members. And I know it doesn't go as far as what you laid out on the table. But it is a step towards lowering the property tax burden on year-round residents. You've raised a much larger conversation that I think we'd have to understand more. I don't understand the implications of all of it, hearing it this way for the first time. So, I would encourage, as somebody who intends to support the residential exemption, I would encourage you to encourage your members to at least submit the form, because it puts, while we talk about the larger issue, it will provide, keep the opportunity open for, in the short term, a reduced tax burden on those people. And that may not be, I don't think you were looking for an answer, but tonight. But I think that it's an important thing to do, and I don't think it concedes anything. I don't think that anybody's going to look at somebody filing that form who's been paying taxes in the town for the period of time that they've owned their property, that signing that form and applying for that benefit implicates anything in their belief system that's different than when they were paying the full un-reduced tax share. You want to have that conversation? I think we're happy to have that conversation. Part of what, you know, you and I talked about was this kind of issue. To really dig into it, I think probably requires some pre-work being done on behalf of your council, our council, managers, and some, you know, perhaps liaisons back and forth to understand what we're, you know, what the issues are and surface them in a way that allows both sides to have a meaningful engagement about what we might do about it and not to get into sort of knee-jerk reactions, well, I don't want to do that. Well, that's scary. Or, we don't know what that all means, because those are all reactions that people might have that will impede finding potential common ground, whether it's everything you're asking for, some of what you're asked for, or what, I don't know. So, I think, you know, we can have this discussion teed up, do some work behind the scenes so that we're in a position to better understand what that might mean and what would be workable. I mean, I've heard in the past, nobody here about tribal members signing property over and having it be taken up into reservation land, I don't know what the implications of that are. I don't know what the implications are of the individual property owners, I don't know what you can assure people. I just don't know. So, we need to, I think, learn more about what some of those options are to be able to weigh how they make sense in this kind of relationship.
Can I just touch really quick on that? Sorry, did you want to go? So, I understand that's a bigger conversation, but when I bought my house over twenty-two years ago, when I signed for it, I had to sign clear title tax because of the fact they said the Wampanoags might come and take the land because there's no clear title tax in Mashpee. And I said, well, my husband and I are both Wampanoag, and that's not true. So, saying that, I know that other conversations are a little bit more in-depth. But could we look into cashing in on the clear title tax that everybody in this town had to purchase and put that into some kind of fund through the tribe? Because that was something that's been brought up several times. And I think that's pretty much an easy fix once we look into that, so.
I answered you when you was, I don't know, I don't know enough about it to know, but should we, would we look into it? Sure.
Oh, okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you. And I'll get you some information that I know on it to help, okay?
I know one thing that I've heard from a few different tribal members is, you know, they, there's a lot that's coming down the pipe with all the wastewater, and then, you know, the confusion went around the tax exemption and stuff like that. So, folks are, I have heard from tribal members to say, you know, well, you know, my father was complaining to the town and saying that, you know, all this development, this is where we're going to end up, and it was going to kill our waters. And, you know, they warned the town of the ramifications of what they were doing, you know, all along. And so, they do come and say, you know, why should I have to pay for that now when we told you not to do it in the first place? You know, and now that the developers have taken their money and ran and are no longer on site, you know, now it's, the burden is on the residents to clean it up. So, they do feel like slighted in that, that they should have to contribute to that cost, you know, when they were telling everybody and advising folks not to do it in the first place. I have heard that, you know, but with the, as far as the resident, and I don't even know how to answer that. You know what I mean? I understand the complexities around, like, you know, how do you address that? But the, as far as the tax exemption, you know, there is a lot of confusion around it. I do encourage our tribal members to, you know, those that are eligible, take advantage of it, you know. And I think, you know, the goal of what we're trying to do is that there are some increased costs that we anticipate coming down the pipe with regards to wastewater being, paying for that and everything. And, you know, if it offsets, if we take you down a little bit now and then it goes up a little bit and it ends up being a wash in the back end, you know, that, if that's all we achieve out of it, then, and it helps and enables the person that's really struggling to remain here in their homelands and doesn't make a lot of money and can barely afford to make ends meet now. If it helps that person, then it was worth it. You know, I don't expect it to be this great solution to any problem or anything, but it's the people struggling the most to remain here and have been here for a long time. And for tribal members, been here since time immemorial, as Chairman said. You know, if it helps those few people to be able to stay here at the end of the day, then it was absolutely worth it, you know, going through the whole exercise. You know, three hundred dollars is a lot of money to somebody that's only making thirty, forty thousand dollars. You know, it's on the other end, not thinking, you know, oh, three dollars, what's that? You know, but three hundred dollars to that household is a lot of money. And so, you know, that's where I think it's our opportunity to help those folks.
The last thing I'll say on that is, you know, this filing exercise and the letters people got was to help inform the tax collector, the assessors, and ultimately the board when we hold a tax classification hearing in November on what the implications of this are, who benefit, who won't, and how we have to set up overlay surpluses and the like. So, filing the form just gives us the information we'll need to be able to make an informed decision. Doesn't commit anybody to anything. The more we know about who might qualify and who might benefit from it, the better information we're going to have, and in theory, the better decision we'll make. So, nobody's committing themselves to anything at this point. You know, we can get ourselves into trouble if a lot of people who intend to do it don't file the form, and then we make financial decisions based on one set of assumptions and it ends up being another set. That's bad for everybody. It's bad financially for the community and the town as an entity. So, I would encourage people, you know, put the form in. I don't know what's going to happen to it. I don't know whether there are three votes to do this. I don't know if there are three votes to do it, and if there are, I don't know what percentage rate the residential exemption is going to be set at. So, more is unknown than known at this point, but we're doing our best to try and find the information so we can make a good decision that's best for the year-round resident of the town of Mashpee, whether tribal or non-tribal. We don't have the ability to distinguish between the two under the state tax code. Like it or not, that's what we've got to live with. You know, and, you know, the lower someone's property value as a way to measure, you know, the income, the higher the benefit. It's a very progressive way of managing taxes at the local level. Some people hate it, but I would encourage that to happen while, because I think the conversation, Chair, you put on the table is going to be a longer one. We're going to make a decision on what tax rate's going to be in November. And we have an opportunity maybe to do something that would benefit tribal and non-tribal members alike who are struggling to make ends meet, as Mr. Whedon said. Sure.
There are additional conversations to have at the state level as well, though, because, I mean, you know, they set the regulations and limitations on what we can do. You know, for me, I don't fully understand how assessed values can still go up as drastically as they are in areas where water quality is declining. You know, there's no variable to take that into consideration. So, you know, I'm going to keep paying more and more taxes because the assessed values are going up because it's a seller's market and, you know, with all the market just being what it is, you know, the assessed values are going up tremendously in a short period of time. And that's going to be compounded over the next few years, and we're not done seeing it. And yet, the water qualities, you know, we're hearing the reports from Brian Howe that's saying that, you know, that the water's at the worst it's ever been, and it's going to become eutrophic. How does my backyard that I, you know, I butt the Walk White Bay or Papa Nessa Bay, how does that still be assessed at those same rates when the water quality is what it is? And, you know, so, there's conversations to be had with that. And also, you know, I think the tribe and the town should approach it together. Because in our history, the history of this town, the state is not an innocent party in that story. And so, you know, there's conversations to be had with the state, and, you know, maybe the tribe, you know, works with the town to try to, you know, get some things done that, you know, may be a challenge. But, you know, for Mashpee, Mashpee has a unique history, and that's a fact. And the state is not innocent in the whole history, and I just wanted to bring that to the table.
Mr. Chair. So, from what I see, we are doing a lot. We are moving forward. People like Andrew, who, and the, and the soil commissioners, they're coming together. We're going to be putting the pipe in the ground, the amount of work, the funds that are set aside. So, it's not that we're not addressing the water issue, we are addressing the water issue. It doesn't happen overnight, you know that as well as everybody else. But with these big-money homes, and they're all big-money homes, I mentioned it in our meetings before, I couldn't afford to buy my house today. And that's, and that's the truth. I mean, it's just hard enough just keeping up with it. And, but these big-money homes that are coming in, they're going to pay a sizable amount of money to put this wastewater treatment system in. And that's, that's to the benefit of all of us. And it's not, it's not fair that the property goes up in value, it's astronomical. I mean, I'm going to say my house, let's say, probably two years ago, let's pick a number, five hundred. Everything in my neighborhood is going for a million plus. It's crazy. It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me, but that's the fact. The reality is that those dollars, those tax dollars are going to help these individuals that are moving here. They're going to create a pool of money that we'll be able to use to make the waterways better and all of the waterways, collection systems, pipe systems. I mean, it might be ten to fifteen years down the road before it's all completed, but at least we're moving forward. There was nothing happening three or four years ago. It was like a standstill. We were always talked about it, but nothing happened. Finally, something's happening. So, I do see it as moving forward. There's nothing I can do about the price of the homes, people are still wanting, it's... The value of property here on Cape Cod, we've all heard in the news, it's higher than downtown Boston. It's just crazy. Everybody wants to live on Cape Cod now. And it's a beautiful place to live here, but I don't know how much longer I can afford to live here.
And so, you know, hearing you say that, you know, I just, there's different realities for each one of us. And from our perspective, you know, selling our homes and moving somewhere else isn't an option. It's not. You know, this is, this is home. This is Mashpee. Your roots are here. You know, everything that makes you who you are is here. There's no place else to go. There's no desire to go anywhere else. So, you know, to sell, sell your home and make a sizable benefit on the sale of it, it's not even something that, you know, for our folks, they consider, or is an option in a lot of cases. You know, so, you know, I have to just make that point heard, because, you know, I do understand we are making progress, but a lot of the benefits that we anticipate aren't going to be here for, you know, ten years or so, you know, by the time the bays and stuff get... So, the problem's going to continue, the water quality to decline. So, you know, my issue is that, you know, when we hear all these different variables that are affecting the increased cost of living, you know, it's, at the end of the day, what we see and how we consider it is, we're concerned with gentrification. You know, you're going to make it so we can't afford to live in our own home. And, you know, the house, and to hear, you know, this is the reality of the market and all the different economic and demographics that go into those, that whole scenario, we have no control over any of it. And we've been complaining about it from day one, and yet, we're the ones that are going to be affected, you know, at the end. And like I said, we have no other place to go. There is no choice. We're not going to sell out and move somewhere else. And so, you know, the gentrification piece is the state's not doing enough for affordable housing. You know, I don't know, there's a lot of issues with the 40B program and why that's not incentivized more, and there's more being done on that front. That, you know, the market with the cost of the houses going up and being driven by market prices and people wanting to move to this influx of people wanting to move to the Cape because they can remote work... because they can remote work for the remainder of their careers, you know, that's, that's compounding the problem. There's a lot of variables that contribute to it. But, you know, from a tribal perspective, you know, we're getting chased out of our own home and we have no options to fall back on.
Yeah. I, I've often thought about it, and I didn't, you know, sometimes I think of, I don't know where the large parcels of land are remaining, where they are, what's buildable and what's not. But oftentimes, I think that the tribe, we're able, the capability of buying a large parcel of land and asking for some changes in zoning bylaws that allow for greater density. And maybe this is, so you would have a, a place where tribal members could, could live and move into and create, you know, a duplex where there might have been single homes or single homes with a, with an in-law or, but you could create, you know, shrink the sidelines. You know, they could be independent structures, but, you know, might be 15 or 20 inches, 20 feet between homes like it is in the greater Boston area, which would allow for, for growth and density. But it would almost be like a tribal neighborhood. And with everybody knowing that you don't have to have a one, you know, an acre lot, you might be able to get away with a 2500 square foot lot, something of that nature. But that's something I would think would be in, the tribe would be capable of putting that together, I would have to think.
Yeah, but, I can almost interpret that as having a reservation within a reservation.
Yes.
We think of Mashpee as the reservation.
Yes.
We see it as Aboriginal land. So I, I think that we have to look back to, to whether or not, what is, is the title that we have to Mashpee enforceable, number one. And number two, how does that play into what's happened now to where nobody wants to displace anyone who's living here? How's the tribe going to be compensated? And number three, as far as the increase in pricing in the houses and more people moving in who can afford it and those who can't afford it are looking elsewhere, including tribal members, you know, it's more or less, we see it as displacing tribal members who have a right to live here. That's the way, me personally, that's the way I see it. So I think that, as Andrew said, this is not going to be resolved in, in one session or, and it's going to take some time and look at all options.
Right.
You know, and see what the bottom line is. You know, whenever I hear of tax increase, I think that's, that's a benefit to the town to keep the, keep the town afloat. At the same time, when I hear that tribal members can't afford to live here and are moving because of that, that's, that's a problem for us. You know, we, 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 we want Mashpee to be Mashpee. You know, and keep in mind that, as David said, this is a unique situation. But it's something that can be resolved by both parties if you continue to work together and have an agreement that it's reduced to writing. So it's not just going to be the individuals here. It's going to be something that's going to be carved in stone, if you will. You know, whatever that, whatever that may be. But I, I think that, the thing that I'm hearing and feeling is that this is a good foundation to get it done. You know, we're very happy with, with our leaders of the tribe. And, and I like what I'm hearing from the select board. So I think there is a, that's, that's a ground to trust, right? Is part of starting negotiations. And what I'm hearing, everything coming from your chair, is that it's willing to work in good faith. At this point in time, I don't think you can ask for anything more.
So maybe we should snatch some victory based on Mr. Toby's comments. And, Mr. Chair, you had suggested, maybe we switch to the future items conversation. You had, and I've had a little bit of conversation about what those might be. And do you want to lay those out for folks and then we can figure out sort of how to do the groundwork to take the good feelings, I think, on both sides come out of tonight and try and do something with it? I don't want to wait six more years to do this again. I think we need to pick up our pace.
Right.
So, Mr. Chair, what are, what are the things that you had in mind for further conversation?
Once again, I just want to thank tribal council, the select board, town residents and tribal members for attending this evening's meeting. Since our administration has taken over, we've seen a lot of response from the town. We did meet with the town manager, and we tried to have quarterly meetings with him, which is the first time that that's happened, in building that relationship between the tribe and our leadership with the town. And also, working with a former chairperson and select board member, Carol Sherman, on making sure that we can have this meeting and following up after Andrew took over as the chair of the board. And we're just really happy to have, you know, an opportunity for us to be listened to and to be heard. I tell people, over 400 years, the tribe doesn't really have a lot to be thankful for. The fact that we own half of 1% of our ancestral territory. It boils down to, we just want to be treated like a sovereign nation. We want meaningful consultation, and we can kind of work out what meaningful consultation means in regards to the town and the tribe. And we just want to be treated equally, just like everyone else. You've seen all these other races and ethnicities go through reparations and so on and so forth. But the Native Americans are still fighting and were the original inhabitants of this land. And that's why it's important for us. Our priority for this administration and the tribal council is the land. That's why the tribal council was formed back in the '70s. It was never about a casino. It's still not, it still is not about a casino. As we know, that requires the state to take ownership on what they did. Not just the town to take ownership, but the state had a big hand in that also. The tribe is trying to work on and negotiate with the state on state-owned land here in Mashpee as well as other various agencies such as the trustees of reservation and other conservation agents that own land in the town of Mashpee. We did talk about the joint base Cape Cod efforts with the disposition of land out there that the tribe is trying to look at obtaining. So the priority for us is land. Just because we said we didn't sue Mashpee doesn't mean, you know, Falmouth Sandwich or Barnstable or anybody else that encroached on Mashpee's original territory. It doesn't mean that there's not a fight and a battle there that I think that the town, if we join forces and we're more collaborative, we can get a lot of our land back. I think that's still within our territory and work on how we, you know, go about getting that land back, not just for the tribe and us, but also for the town and the town's purposes as we talk about, you know, taxes and other revenue that the tri, the town and the tribe need for wastewater. So I just wanted to leave it with that. And one of the items that were not discussed this evening is the IGA. Obviously, that's a larger discussion, but the tribe feels as if the IGA should be up for negotiations or amendments every five, 10 years, 20 years, whatever the clause is, and not leave it open-ended. So the tribe would be willing to meet about the IGA and discuss that at a separate time.
Okay. So, just to try to distill it down, if we, would you be open to the idea of working at some subgroups, perhaps our council, town manager, liaisons, to meet, to flesh some of these issues out? Both the IGA issues and the land issues? There's a lot, obviously, underneath and woven into all that, in addition to what we've talked about tonight. But is the council and you as chair, would you be comfortable having some more in-depth conversations among some working groups to try and set up an agenda to carry these meetings forward to another public meeting?
Absolutely. We can work with the liaisons and their respective departments and make sure that the officers work with the town manager on information that you guys need as well.
Okay. And could we sort of, in good faith, commit to a meeting, say, in October? We've got, well, how about before, by the, around the first of November? Just, we get a town meeting, middle of the month, so we get a little busy, you know, first half of October. But commit to getting together before November, again, just to, even if we don't have anything we're ripe on, just to continue the conversation. Does that work?
Yeah, that works for the tribe.
Okay. And I was remiss at the beginning not mentioning, Ms. Sherman was not able to attend. She didn't feel particularly well this evening, so she'd send her apologies. I had meant to convey those at the beginning of the meeting, but she just obviously don't take anything from her absence, other than she wasn't up to the meeting tonight.
Send her her prayers, speedy recovery. I know we're ending, but one last thing, I will be speaking into the planning board, but I know it comes to you guys as a vote. I think a big factor is now we made it a two-acre lot when you're buying some land. I think that's another reason why we're eating up so much land. There's nothing, there's no woods. There's, we're coming to no woods, so I think that's another thing maybe we can talk about because that's a big factor with all these big houses going up and you have nothing in between, so. And then people wonder why the coyotes are in their backyard, because they took their houses. So, I'll just end it like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, on our behalf, I want to thank the council for inviting us in to have this conversation. And I hope we will do this more frequently.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
No move, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.